Okay, I'd like to call the order the regular meeting of the Board of Select for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. It is now seven to one P M. I could give a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our.
I'm sitting here thinking, I wondered if you'd ask how long this would take?
Well. There was one thing I wanted to talk about.
Um, is it something we need to vote on? I can add it or we can talk about during the report?
We could just talk about that.
Okay, okay. And if it's something we want to add to, we'll do that. Um, any public comments? None and correspondence. Um, technically we do. We'll be, we'll be handling the correspondence of. We have a lot of correspondence right now regarding the storm.
Oh, yeah.
So are we going to, are we going to just, the, the stuff that we got from P U C?
It's in here.
It's in here. So we'll talk about that as a recommendation.
Yep. So it's D one.
Okay.
Procurement committee is D two.
Got it. B one and D two. So we'll get to that and we'll talk about that when we actually talk about the recommendations. Um. Approval of minutes. Um, I move to approve the board stuff in regular minute made many minutes from August 6th, 2024. See, I believe we were all here. Yeah. Any questions or? Discussion on meeting minutes? Without attorney minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, for a second report. Obviously, the one thing to talk about is, uh, is the storm. Um, you know, first off, I'll say that. Our first responders did a great job. Um, I've had, you know, all kinds of accolades about, you know, they did a good job. It was calm. It's well controlled. Like they really did a very nice job for us. Um, we had a number of roads closed. The ones that probably had the most damage were, uh, weed at Walnut Hill. Um, the edges of the roads were washed out. Plum trees culvert. Um, over by Edmund, kind of similar thing, uh, washout by Nashville Road over by the Overlook Park, Chestnut Ridge, um, and Wolf Pits. Now, the, the first four I mentioned have already been fixed. Wolf Pits will be fixed tomorrow. Those are some of the major just our issues in town.
Was birch from okay, because that was.
Birch is okay. I talked to, I talked to Tom Villa right after we spoke and, um, the, the, the building was supposedly up higher. I drove back in and looked around. It looked fine. And, uh, some of the contractors were there. It looked like it weathered the storm.
Yeah, that was underwater.
Yeah, well, yeah, the whole, like a parking lot out, like you said.
But the building was above the water.
Yeah, it's up a little bit higher. Yeah. The, um, I mean, the, uh, the property, personal property damage is somewhat significant, obviously, around town. Um, so, you know, we had, uh, we are tracking that now. There's a link that was released today for residents, businesses, everybody can crack their information, something called Crisis Track that we get from the, uh, the Demus Five region. And we'll track that with the hope of getting some sort of funding back, even for our things, but possibly some for the, you know, individual houses, those who are not insured. There may be opportunities according to Demus. We had a briefing yesterday afternoon about it. So we'll, we'll know more as the week goes on. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention because with this, there is, I'll, I'll first say Bethel's built on a lot of water and you all know this. Uh, but the, the way that the floodwaters receded here shows like how good of a job this town has done over the many years of, of doing the drainage. We still have some really big issues to work on just in general. But overall, I believe that's part of the reason that we weren't as, in as much trouble. And we've also plugged the highway department. They've done a lot of reclamation of roads. And these roads where we've had these edges, you know, bust off, those could have been massive failures. But because those roads have been reclaimed and they have so much process and everything underneath, I think that's a real testament to like just the fact we were prepared. Um, so I'm super happy about that. Um, with that said, uh, I have instructed Public Works, Highway, cops, firemen, get as much data as you can. All the calls that have come in. Obviously, we've got a lot of people sending emails and, um, at some point we'll put those in Crisis Track. And what we'll try to do is get a map of how this whole thing, you know, came out. That's my goal and see if we have areas that we can improve because this was a one in a thousand year story, you know, one, once in a thousand risk. I think this is one of those things that could be a huge opportunity for us to make improvements if we can. So that's kind of my shtick on that. I mean, Brian, you mentioned you have some things you wanted to talk about during the report.
Um. Not about the storm.
Okay.
You know, I saw a lot of damage.
Yeah.
Understand it's gotta get prepared. I have had people approach me about this ever source public benefits. And I'm wondering if as a board, it would make sense or, you know, you, we draft a letter to the governor and ever source basically just expressing our outrage that, you know, there's so many people were just making ends meet right now. And, you know, to add, you know, I don't know where they're coming up with three dollars or whatever it is a bill. I mean, I had a hundred ninety tacked on to mine. Um, so it's just, there's a lot of people are hurting and just cannot afford this. And I know in, you know, December, they're going to talk about another rate increase per kilowatt, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, that's coming. We know that's coming. So I wonder, you know, whether you or as a board, we just send a very strong letter to the governor and to ever source demanding action that our citizens cannot. You know, you're really hurting people who are already hurting. I mean, they could never have to have a choice. Do I feed my kids or do I pay ever source? Like what do I take away from my children right now? Because I can't afford this.
Yeah. So good point. Um, on Friday, this past Friday, uh, I asked finance to provide me the numbers of, on how it would affect the town. And I am planning to write that letter. If we'd like to do it from the board, that's okay too. Um, I, I've been asked in the public about it a number of times. I've told them, yes, we are writing a letter. We're going to put something out. I just was waiting to get that, that last little information about how it affected our town as well. Cause my opinion is, you know, we have a big electric bill and now it's not only you getting it from your electric company, but you're also getting it paying for talent for bill. Are we getting?
Are they putting that on to commercial bills though? Because I, I, I do all of ours and I looked for it.
You don't have a public benefits charter?
I didn't see it. I didn't see it. I just, I just did fifteen branches and I felt we're all seeing it. So I was wondering new commercial or commercial entities exempt from this.
I'll look at it. I'm, I'm told it's on ours. It's, yeah. And, and to your point, I mean, we got, we got while twice.
Oh.
You know, and the, and the first one, there's a lot of politics going around about who, but it was a bipartisan bill in 2017.
Doesn't matter. We're past that.
This last one is, is energy, uh, infrastructure for units. That's their, so. But the people are hurting. Um, these things could have been done another way. We, we already pay high, you know, high.
Only Alabama is bigger than ours. Only Alabama.
Is Alabama now? Used to be Hawaii.
I think Alabama is like the, I was looking at it the other day, trying to see where we stacked. We were number two in the country. I think Alabama.
Did we surpass Hawaii? An island?
We're number two in the country.
Yeah.
For the highest.
Go Connecticut.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we will do. Would you, would you prefer to write it as a board?
Whatever you.
I was planning to do it, but.
I think it's better to come from the board.
Okay, we'll do that.
Perfect.
We'll do that. So we'll pin it as a board and, um, I'll have it ready by, you know, next couple of days, maybe in a week for sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for bringing it up. Um, any old business? No old business, new business. Um, I move that we approve the tax refunds, the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and ninety seven cents due to overpaying the taxes. Any discussion? Sure I got them here. Um, as ever, we recall for doing these more frequently so that we can get these in people's pockets. Pretty straightforward. Any, uh, questions, comments without attorney minds, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Those are fun stuff. Uh, let's talk about several changes to the transfer station fee sheet. So if you look at, uh, C one in your packet, you'll notice the, uh, transfer information, the prices there. We're looking at a couple of, uh, small changes. Uh, first off, the, the food scrap program has been phenomenal. I mean, it's really been a success. We've converted, I think by the end of the, what this month, it'll be twelve, twelve tons, uh, which is really substantial. Um, the program is actually staying afloat on its own. I mean, if we look at, um, you know, what we've been paying right now, we're, we're staying afloat. If we, I think what we want to look at now is we have a new scale down there. You know, whether it was a lightning strike or whatever happened, we don't know, but the, the last scale was crushed and it's done. Um, it gave us the opportunity now though, to be able to weigh different things and have multiple things on the ticket, you know, so they can weigh the food scraps and they can weigh the M S W separate. Now I think we have this opportunity to really refine how people are paying for it. So if somebody is showing up with a, you know, half a bucket, instead of just charging them a dollar, we're going to go, we're looking to go to per pound. It's actually a, a better way that folks are doing it. It will help those folks. If you've got full bucket, you actually may pay a little more because you, but you're going to pay ten cents per pound is what we're looking to do. Um, down the line, if we ever want to change it or raise it, we could, but at ten cents per pound, we would still cover our weekly pickup of food scraps. Of course, I, I will say the long-term plan is to try to find our own way here, either transport ourselves or compost it. We're looking at it in all kinds of options, invest all, all this stuff, but right now we're in good shape. Um, the other thing with this are, you know, because everything we've done and managed it well, our grant has been extended. We have a lot of money. What do we have left in money there? By the way, Tiffany, introduce yourself. I think they all know you.
She introduced herself. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, she told us before the meeting.
Um, H R A, he was assisting the town of Bethel with the S and M grant money they received originally, which was fifty five, no, here's the support of that. Um, but we asked for additional funding of twenty four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, which they approved based on the success of what we had during the pilot, the first twelve months of pilot. And they extended, um, the contract to October of twenty twenty five. So we've got that additional support to carry us there.
So again, how, how do we rank with other towns?
Um, Bethel is very different in the pilots because you already had unit-based pricing for your M S W. Whereas the other towns were moving from a one price of their permit and people could throw as much as they wanted to. So what the advantage for your, um, municipality was that we were giving, bringing the additional service of trying to get those food scraps, organics out of their waste and the pricing proposal now is actually going to save your residents money because normally they're paying twenty five cents per pound and they're leaving their food scraps in there. Now we're going to offer it to them at ten cents per pound just for the food scraps and keep the M S W at twenty five.
And the, the hope of doing that was just hope it does work. The pay if you throw concept, they see the difference.
Yes.
You know, when they look at their, their, you know, their, their tickets and they go out, they pay for it. They see a substantial difference in the way. It's obvious. Um, I'll probably soon we're, we're going to do a, uh, I'll do a video series on myself trying to make the transition over to using the transfer station food scraps. So that should be interesting. Um, but anyway, in addition to the food scraps, having new scale, uh, gives us the opportunity now to actually charge a little more for the large items that costs us more to get rid of. So we're looking to go ahead and raise that to thirty cents per pound. Tables, chairs, end tables, bed frames, desks, restrooms, etc.
Was that the six hundred ton?
Well. I know.
It's, that seems kind of, that seems kind of high to me. Six hundred a ton. We're at five hundred a ton.
We're getting rid of the large stuff?
Yeah. I mean, you're talking about six hundred a ton. I mean, I think, uh, Winter Brothers charges a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty tons to take it in. Am I right?
I think they're like a month.
I think they're up to a hundred eighty four or something like that.
Yeah. So you go to a month on top of the month, pop it off and make your count. It's not way.
It's still, I agree. You can go like dumpster. For that, I mean, you get a dumpster for three hundred and then it moves up top.
But it's, it's the convenience and the service that the town is providing for a resident not to have that big container in your yard or do, do you know what I'm saying? There's a, a trade-off between the service of coming to the transfer station or, or possibly having to transport it to Danbury to the big.
Yeah.
Centralized transfer station.
Well, and we also try, I mean, we also want the transfer station to stay afloat. And we've, we've had this conversation many times about turning it over to another vendor or somebody who won't be open two days a week. And I, I don't believe that's going to save our residents any money. Um, we could, you know.
It's tiny. It just seems real high to me. Six hundred a ton to dump. It's very, very hot.
I think for the con- convenience of doing it at the transfer station.
Yeah, because someone's not bringing six hundred pounds.
Not, I, so. No, or two thousand.
As long as we don't start seeing tables and chairs, as long as they're ruined.
True, true. Then we would have a problem.
Yeah.
I mean, how's your, how, I mean, overall, you feel that we're making a mistake by doing that?
I don't have a problem. Look, I don't have a problem with ten cents per pound for the food. If you're saving people money. Um, well, I mean, a nickel on a hundred twenty pound couch is six bucks. Right?
Yeah.
They bring two couches, it's twelve dollars. They have the flood, they bring their carpet there. They never move flat carpet. It just seems like a real.
Yeah. Your transfer station is really good about minimizing that oversized bulky waste. They're taking that four foot, less than four foot. If it is over four feet or it's not, it's like a truckload of a, of a house, then they are sending them on to, um, Danbury because of the way that the material has to be managed before it can go to Bridgeport.
So we don't even take bulky waste really.
Small amounts. Say that you don't. I, I mean, you'll definitely can go there and see it, but it's a one-off type thing. The guys won't. The guys will judge it by the resident coming in. If it's a broken chair and it's.
I get it. That's.
If they came in with a big dump truck load of material, they're going to tell them to take it directly to Danbury, not.
Well, right now according to our fees, couches are twenty five to thirty five per item anyway. Those are weighed. It's just the tables, chairs and tables, all that stuff.
Metal, metal bed frames are free though, right? Are we charging for metal?
If it's separated, no. If it's separated, they can throw the metal and the metal collection data now. You're actually making money out of that.
You're talking about like headboards they're charging for like.
Big furniture. Stuff that if you tried to set that out at your curb, if you had curbside service, you're going to get charged by your caller to pick up an item like that. Usually you have to call them in advance and say, can I put this out?
So you're saying our transfer station won't take a little boy full of building materials and stuff is what you're saying anyway?
No, you should not be accepting C and D. You have no. You'll get dinged if it goes to Bridgeport and it's in with your M S W and, and, um, management will be size.
Um, Millie, correct me. I just, I just was thinking this today. We have to send this to town meeting, right? So my motion. Talk about that last time. Do we, can we just do this? We have to send this town meeting.
I have to check the minutes.
I don't want you to probably have to go to the town meeting to change these schedules.
I think generally we do, Jen.
Yeah, I think we did that last time.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, we will be, I mean, I'm looking to do something in September to catch up on a number of things.
So it's not just online.
Yeah, we, there's a few things we'll have, I think. Yeah, um. So with that, um, I'll make a motion that we that we recommend to the town meeting, um, the adoption of the new schedule, um, for the Bethel Transfer Station. And for the discussion. Well, I haven't got something. Oh, that's going out? Okay. Without attorney minds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next up, consideration approval recommendation from a public site and building commission to accept S T V's proposal for owner, owner's project management services for the Bethel High School HVAC mechanical upgrades in the amount of ninety six thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollars. So this is at D one, D two, D three. Okay, so, um. What we have here is we have, um, well, first off, I'll, I'll say the procurement committee is D two. The procurement committee met and, um, by charter, the procurement committee, um, was supposed to make a recommendation, but also the public site building committee is charged with making recommendations. They did it kind of sequentially here because public site actually took the procurement committee's recommendation and went with it. Um, but they are technically separate recommendation. Um, there were three bids um, for the owner's rep. Remember, the reason we're looking at the owner's rep right now is before we do anything on the other bids, we're hoping the owner's rep would be able to help with that process. So that's why I'm looking at the owner's rep, uh, process first. The, uh, lowest bid was S T V, which, uh, was the driving factor behind the procurement committee's approval, but also I think with public site building, um, they made an approval as well. Obviously, it's a company that we've worked with a lot and it was significantly less than the other two bids. So I'll open it up for discussion. Um, the bid is here. Anything you'd like to add, Jen, before we? Okay. And once we do a motion on this, it will be subject to, um, you know, the contract and come up with, we talked with the town attorney about making some changes, I guess, with respect to how our insurance is considered. Yeah.
Did you need that motion?
I didn't make a motion yet.
Okay.
I just said, we're going to consider it and I just thought we'd talk about it and then we'll make a motion to accept it.
And we're sure that S T V understands what's required. That's a pretty big discrepancy of bids. I guess, you know.
Thank you. And one of the, one of the questions that I think was talked about is that the other bids had a lot more, I guess, engineering and stuff, like it was almost like they added all other things that we were looking, I think we all looked at and said, well, those probably are, S T V already has. And it was almost like they were upscaling, I think is why they looked at it and thought the discrepancies were there. Obviously, the Kaffa Group one, whatever that is, I haven't, I don't know much about them and that was really significant.
Kaffa Group is doing one of our, um, air handler operations for it now on the cannibal side.
Yeah. Okay.
And S T V has experience in heating and corn?
Yes. Yes.
They, they've worked with us for our Rockwell Downs and School, which included those types of cannibal upgrades.
Yeah. On, um, page thirteen.
And.
Yeah, they've done a lot of, I mean, a lot of stuff with schools in general, including their own theaters, all age back. So if we make the motion, I move that we accept the S T V proposal for owner's project management services for Bethel's High School, HVAC mechanical upgrades in the amount of ninety six thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollars. Subject to, actually, did I? Let me run this back. So I want to read it the way the attorney did. Let me start this color. I move that we approve the recommendation of the public site and building commission and the procurement committee to accept S T V's proposal in response to bid number twenty four dash zero zero eight, owner's project management services for Bethel High School HVAC mechanical upgrades in the amount of ninety six thousand, five hundred and ninety one dollars. Subject, however, to contract terms and conditions acceptable to the town of Bethel and to applicable state contract compliance requirements.
Okay. That's just a question.
Yeah.
Are, are, are you planning on using the contingency in the overall project? If S T V has additional bills, because in the contract they outline that if they need uh, additional help, they give the price. So I mean, you're coming in right at what the amount is they bid. What contingency do you have if they need to bring in?
Or.
Other, other, other help. Are you going to pull it out of the whole project contingency?
Yes. Yeah, we have. Our overall project has a, a maximum limit of approximately four point two million dollars for the grant project. And so this owner's rep needs to fit in there. We have to have the commission in there and there has to be a certain amount of
Um, what are, what are the bid? I, I know you refit everything. Have they come in?
So we have three bids that came in and, um, and we need to evaluate them. There, there are two that are similar places. We, we have to look at those scopes. We've bid it as a base bid with three alternates. Um, so we need to carefully look at those with scope and, uh, key included and make sure we have our, the owner's contingency and.
What, what size contingency are you guys going to carry?
The bids are on D two. Yeah, a separate. Procurement sheet. Or.
D two.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, that's it. Those are the other bits.
Um, we were carrying, uh, three hundred sixty thousand eight and that's to what the process is.
And when, when you looked at these bids, the base bid is just basically saying the minimum scope or and if you're able to do more, you're going to do more based on your budget.
Yeah. So the, the base bid is, um, so if you think about nineteen seventy five proportion of the high school, it has um, essentially it's pretty predominantly mapped in English classrooms.
Nope.
That is the base bid. So one of the alternates is also to do the backside of that area, which is more similar language classrooms and which alternates do the first floor where our R T C is and which the alternate for exhaust fans.
But it's, it's not included in that price.
If you're looking at the procurement sheet.
Yeah, I see the base bid for a, like, let's just go with all state construction was three, two, two, one.
Yeah.
So that is just to do just the base.
Yes.
And if we didn't ask to bid the other phases to see what the total project would be?
Um, no, we have that. It just wasn't put on that sheet. I have a separate sheet that has, um.
Oh, yeah. It'd be interesting just to see if those numbers came in and for us to project.
Yes.
That's the base one for B?
Yes, this is the base bits right here to all of their alternates and it's totally out of the. It's high. This one is coming below us, but we need to, we need to make sure that they have the same scope included.
And what was the total budget? Remember, it was four point, four point two or something?
It's four point one eight. Okay.
Four point one eight.
So.
So you're a little shy because you went with one of them to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So is, uh, is S T V, uh, price, is that for the base bid and they would?
No, these are the mechanical bits.
Yeah, I know, but if, if you go with more work, does S T V have to do more work?
What he's saying is if you, if you go, if you go, if you did a base, and so if you decide you want to do the English languages and all that, is S T V going to have extra fees because now they're doing extra work?
Well, we should confirm that, but it's not my expectation that that would drive extra work. My expectation is that their quote of the ninety six thousand would cover the entire project.
Well, that's something you should clear. That's something you should clarify because you know, if they're just going on the base bid and then they're going to come back to say, well, if you select alternate A or B, it's X amount of dollars more. So.
And the S T V.
But there was nothing in their bid saying that there was extra.
But all the alternates are smaller projects, right?
And the cost estimate for the whole rant of the four point one eight was done by S T V. So they are aware of all the alternatives. And that was in them. They know.
Well, if you just clarify that.
Right there. More than that, right? Because they came in at two, four and they're over a million dollars when you add them up. If they came in at two, four for the base and. If they came in at two, four for the base and to do them all is four point one, that comes out to one point seven million. Those projects. So. You know, I think Richie brings up a good point. And the other question is if we don't have the money to do it, is STV gonna do it at a reduced rate?
Yeah, right. Because they're not doing as much work.
As much work.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that needs to.
They kinda have before.
Yeah. So, so maybe STV is on, based on their bid price on the four point one eight, uh, four point one eight million dollar project, but if we don't do the whole four point one eight, if we only do uh, two point five, say, do they owe us any money back or they, we don't get charged for that actually? So it just clarified.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll have the knowledge.
We're gonna go to contract. Well, that's what Millie will do. When we go to contract, all that'll be tied out. Um, okay, so with that, we do have a motion on the table to accept the bid. Any further discussions? Any on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and, um, one more motion. I move to authorize Dan Lee Carter, his first elect in the town of Bethel, to negotiate with and execute the contract with STV, including any modifications and change orders related thereto and further to perform any other act or actions that may be customarily or originally required to effectuate the intent of the motion, of this motion. One second. And discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Want to carries? Okay. And I believe that is the last thing. Any other business can come before the board? Anything to add?
Motion.
The motion adjourned. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. So we are adjourned at seven thirty-three PM.
Doctor Mike's.